Welcome to the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners meeting, March 21st, 2024. We'll start with the introductions of the dice.
Justice Julia from Administration.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Ludo, County Administrator, Michael Friedman, Legal Counsel.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission President Alicia Reese. We always start our meeting with silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join us in silent prayer. Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now have a public comment. We've got three cards here. And Herschel Daniels, Jr.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, President. I'd like to bring up the issue of JFS. And recently, we held at the Cincinnati Public Schools, a black male fatherhood initiative. And it's come to my attention that JFS needs some county commission oversight relative to black men who want to take responsibility for their biological children. And JFS, I would like for you to direct the administration to have a report prepared on the issue of black male leadership in taking charge of their children and understanding that this is a problem, that there are resources that the federal government has made available for that. And I would also like to inform you as a follow-up that on April 16th through the 19th, at the United Nations, at the Permanent Forum, people of African descent is meeting in Geneva, Switzerland. And Hamilton County is featured from the work of Commissioner Dreehouse for the Commission on the Status of Women at the United Nations last Friday. Our organization participated on the 68th meeting of the Commission on the Status of Women. And we will be submitting at the National Community Reinvestment Coalition meeting on April 2nd on Capitol Hill. Our proposal for Hamilton County to be a shining example that you have worked so hard as a unified commission body to make us. Thank you for this time. And I would leave you with the information. Take a look at the $88 billion PNC agreement that I wrote and as part of the National Community Reinvestment Coalition. It is available to you for use.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And we have Director Patton from JFS, Mr. Ludo, maybe get in contact regarding that issue. I want to take a moment back and make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Okay. Our next speaker, if I mess up the pronunciation, please forgive me. And is it Kamsha? Kamisha? I'm sorry. And how do you say your last? Webster? Okay. Thank you. Kamisha Webster. Kamisha Webster. You have two minutes. Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Kamisha Webster. I am a citizen of the United States of America, but a resident of Cincinnati, Ohio. And I wanted to come to address the board about a few concerns that I have considering housing, the tenant and landlord relationship, which is in shambles right now. I have faced a lot of things with my landlord personally, with getting maintenance done, treating pests and things of that nature. I have called down to the Health Department. I have called every revenue to try to get some results. And what I have come up with to the conclusion is that the law is not on our side when it comes to the tenants. The landlord has every right to do whatever, so to speak. The man down from Hamilton County Health Department told me that the landlord doesn't have to be having a contractor or anything to come into my house to fix anything if he doesn't have a five-unit building. And that goes for, I called Housing Make-Equal. I talked to everybody in the line and they told me that that is true. Even the person with a single home, the landlord is not entitled to getting a contracted person to come into the household to fix anything. And if I submit a request to the Hamilton County Health Department or whomever it is, there's nothing that is being done. There's nothing. And if I have to, if I wanted to put my money into escrow for the landlord and everything like that, I have to provide with him a 30-day notice prior to me giving, putting my money into escrow. After everything already I have been through, I have to give him a 30-day notice. Now, if I was being put out the property and everything like that, he gives me a 3-day notice. I don't get it. I don't get it 30 days. He's immediately be able to do whatever he wants to do to me. And that's all the landlords. Another thing I wanted to talk about was Section 8 housing. Now, we have Section 8. We have the access to a voucher. But the people with the voucher have to have, you have the same qualifications for a normal person to get into a house, which is the credit score. You have to make three times the rent. And tell me again, how many people in Cincinnati or anywhere make it three times the rent? And then another thing I wanted to say before my time is up is that I know that you guys are working really hard doing a 513 relief and everything like that. But I had talked to people when we were talking about the regentrification and who was infecting and what we're doing. And they said that y'all had some monies that were allotted, that y'all were going to be doing some revamping and some revitalization to us as our community and that y'all were going to do some things. And they said, and I asked them, when y'all get ready to do these things, are y'all going to give the jobs to the community or what? What y'all going to do?
I have to ask you, I'm sorry.
Okay. But I would like to say that I would like to see a lot more representation from you, Ms. Alicia Reese, because you are the only face in the community that we have that is ours. And we're not staying, even though you're working good on the 513.
I'm going to have to cut you off, but we can talk.
Okay, I understand, but I just wanted to say that. But I need to see more from Ms. Alicia Reese in the diversity in the community.
I appreciate it.
This is not my last time. I will be back again. Y'all did look at me all crazy the last time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Next is, one more card. Same card. Is this the same card? Okay. Okay, I'm really going to mess this up. I don't want to mess it up. Casa? I'm sorry. If you say your name, I don't want to mess your name up.
It's Casa El Salassi Sheyamuru.
Okay. Thank you. You have two minutes.
I'm coming here today to speak on behalf of my children who are in custody for JFS. I left LA in April 2022 to return to address a child abuse by their mother. Dinah, Ambessa, Emelsete, Alamazi Salassi, those are my biological children. They bear my last name. For the last past two years, I've been getting the runaround. I've been alienated. I haven't done anything to the, for the initial subject matter of the case. And so with all the things that have been done, we're wondering why the children haven't been released, released to me. I was born and raised in Ohio. I've been a resident of California for the last seven years. I initially came two years ago to address this alleged situation. Right now, we're just seeking assistance from the commissioners to look into what's going on with the JFS and how they're handling our particular case. We had a TPR meeting conference yesterday to discuss all the allegations against the mom. They still haven't come up with a valid reason as to why I can't get the children. So that's why I'm here today, seeking some sort of assistance and guidance, as Mr. Daniels stated originally, into JFS.
Thank you. You have a written document, so everybody has that. We'll get it.
Written document, I've made six copies.
Okay. And Mr. Ludo is the Administrator. He will follow up. Thank you. Okay. Now we get into comments, our comments. But before we get into the comments, I want to take a step. We have an important situation and I'm going to turn over to Vice President Dreehouse regarding our auditor.
Thank you. We have a by leave. It's by leave number five. It is a resolution appointing an acting auditor pursuant to RC Section 305.02. And so I wanted to advance that and thank you for advancing that on the calendar. This is related to a letter that we all received yesterday. So I just have a couple of remarks to make before we get to that resolution. So yesterday morning, my colleagues and I received a letter from Hamilton County Auditor Bridget Kelly. Officially resigning from her position. As many know, Bridget was diagnosed with cancer just under two years ago. She has fought this disease with her typical rigor while continuing to serve as the county auditor. Bridget is currently under hospice care. At this point in time, Bridget believes it is best not only for herself, but also for Hamilton County to step down from her position as the county auditor. I would like to thank Bridget for her hard work and dedication. In her short time in office, she has modernized the auditor's office and has overseen a robust reappraisal process. She has built an office that is committed to transparency, accuracy, and outstanding constituent service. Bridget has increased staffing and has created more equity to better serve our community. Quick and impactful success has always followed Bridget Kelly. Bridget has shown strong leadership and is leaving the office on firm footing. She has respectfully asked that we consider appointing Chief Deputy Auditor Amy Humphrey as the acting auditor until the Hamilton County Democratic Party selects a replacement per the Ohio Revised Code. In Bridget's words, "With Amy at the helm, the office will be left in good hands. Amy is the utmost professional." I have known Bridget for decades. Her entire adult life has been about fighting for what she believes in. Dignity for others, fairness, and justice. I was delighted when she stepped up to serve the 31st House District upon my departure at the State House. Bridget quickly became a force in the Ohio Democratic Caucus. Leading with strength, integrity, and dedication.
No apologies.
Bridget brought that same commitment to the county auditor's office, and we were lucky to have her serve in that role. While not the most glamorous position, no offense to those in the room, she approached it with gusto and with her splash of signature Kelly green. I wish Bridget and her family the best and thank her profoundly for both her friendship and her commitment to public service. Bridget Kelly has made an indelible mark on our community. So, Madam President, before we get to the resolution, I'm sure that you and Commissioner Somar Dumas would like to make some comments as well.
Yes. It's almost unbelievable. First met Bridget Kelly with the young Dems. And it was no secret, we were kind of recruiting her because we said, this is the kind of leader for the future. The future will be in good hands, great hands. And then I watched her proudly representing Norwood and always inviting me, said they have the best burgers in Norwood. When we got to the State House, we served at the State House together. Bridget was a fighter, always prepared, always researched, and always said, let's go get them. We've got to stand up for the future of our state at that time. But she and I really got close about the aunties. We both are aunties. And she said, we would always exchange stories about what we did with our nieces over the weekend. And I would get some of the ideas from her and I would run with my nieces so I could be popular. She would look on my Facebook and say, oh, I think I'm going to try this. She was a very proud aunt. We really came together as the aunties. We call ourselves the Auntie Caucus. So when I got the news, of course, Vice President Dreehouse read all of her accolades and all that she's done and great leadership that she's had. But I think the biggest thing that I'm torn to pieces about, she's got little nieces that look up to her. She loves her nieces. And I'm just, I would want to send prayers to her family, her mom and her dad. She was a woman about family. And when cancer comes in and hits someone in your family, it's a rough road. It's a rough road for her to be so young. And it just reminded me, I was going to, I kept saying, we want to have this cancer caucus. We just can't wait. We just, we just can't wait. And she continued to run a race when she had cancer and was able to win. And came to this job, I saw her moving in furniture, showing up every day, even though she had her own fight, trying to fight for the citizens of this county. It's unbelievable. I'm shocked by the news. I had called her Saturday. She was on my mind. I said, hey, I'm just calling to say hello, see how you're doing. And she normally hits me right back. And when I didn't get the right back, I said, something's going on. And then, we're not allowed to talk to each other, but Vice President Dreehouse called my Chief of Staff. And he told me, you're going to have to sit down. I got some bad news. So I really don't have a lot of words. I just think about her little nieces and how much she poured into them and how much she meant to them. And I'm just going to keep praying for the family. And I turn to Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. She's, she's in hospice, so she's, she's still fighting as a fighter. She's been a fighter. And as was said earlier, so young. And we always say, what do you do with the dash in between once you're born? She has plenty to be proud of. She's done so much in her short years. She's always, I've known her for many years, I don't think as long as you guys have. But as far as I know and everything I've seen, she's always worked so hard. And the thing about her is just she's always been so positive. She's always had a glow about her and never complained about anything. And so just a bright spot in my life and just the nicest person. And I'm sure she was a great state rep, but she was an awesome person. So just a big surprise and unfortunate, but I'll keep praying and pushing for her. That's all I.
And Vice President Dreehouse, even in her own fight in hospice, she's worried about the taxpayers of Hamilton County gave you instructions and us instructions and said, I want you to appoint Amy and keep this going. And that tells you about what type of person she is, because most people say, I've got to deal with my own stuff. But she wanted to make sure Hamilton County is not left behind. So at this time, you have a resolution you'd like to introduce?
Yes. It's the resolution appointing Amy Humphrey as the acting director, acting auditor. So I am going to move that we approve of by leave number five.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Somar Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you. And if you don't mind, Amy is ready to be sworn in. So I think we would like to take care of that.
Yes. And Amy has requested that Vice President Dreehouse swear her in, so. Approach.
Hi, Amy Humphrey.
Hi, Amy Humphrey.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
As the Hamilton County Auditor.
As the Hamilton County Auditor.
To the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
This I do.
This I do.
As I shall answer unto God.
Thank you.
Thank you, Auditor Amy. If you would like to say a few words.
Just wanted to say thank you very much. I appreciate and I'm humbled by the ability to serve and your vote of confidence in me serving as the interim auditor. I'm surrounded by extremely talented and dedicated staff, and we will continue to serve the public, the county administration, and all the state and county offices with excellent service, just as we had. I'm blessed to have learned from two of the best in Auditor Kelly, as we just heard all of her accolades, and they really don't even touch the surface of who she is as a person. And also Auditor Rhodes. Thank you very much for the honor to serve as interim auditor. Appreciate your time today.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now we'll go to comments. Comments, I'll start out. Last Friday, I had the opportunity to give some remarks, and I know Vice President Dreehouse will talk more about it, at the Hamilton County Addiction Response Full Coalition Meeting and had their State of Addiction. Well-attended, and I know Vice President Dreehouse will give more details on that, but it was a great attendance. In addition, I attended the Urban League Black Women in Tech graduation ceremonies. And it was great because this was a rigorous curriculum for women to get into that tech space. And it was great, they get their certification, a real certification out of this program. And then we'll be speaking at the Building Futures Ceremony tomorrow, graduation ceremony tomorrow, which I'm super excited about with the partnership of the Urban League and the Building Trades. So I'm excited to see those graduates. Also, on Tuesday, we had a primary election. I want to thank everyone who came out and voted. Appreciate that. And now we're moving on to a November election. So if you're not registered, you can begin to get registered to vote or double-check your registration, because voter ID laws are in effect now. And so any questions that you have, you can contact the Board of Elections and you can check your registration even online to make sure that everything is accurate and available. So wanted to let people know that voter registration has reopened and people can register to vote. Want to also attended the Housing Our Futures Strategy Session led by LISC of Greater Cincinnati. And I got a chance to give an overview and give some remarks. And I want to thank Liz Bloom and Kristen Baker for the invite. And they had the mayor, and then I gave remarks on behalf of Hamilton County. And one of the things I stressed was that we need to move toward affordable housing choices. If someone wants to rent, it should be affordable. Someone wants to own, it should be affordable. But we need to move to a model of not forcing one in one bucket or the other. We should be a county of affordable housing choices and making sure that it is affordable for us to be able to live in Hamilton County and not be priced out. And got a chance to talk about, obviously, the investment that our board has made of $40 million, which is nothing to sneeze at, in a partnership with CDF and a lot of the projects that we have already been able to get moving. So we're very excited about that. Also, it is, let me see, what else I have? Oh, also on Friday, All In Cincinnati is hosting a Women's History Salute and Photo Celebration Shoot at the Black Music Walk of Fame, and they're honoring some of the women that are in the Walk of Fame. And so people, everyone's invited to wear yellow and come on out. So I'm excited about that. Also, wanted to highlight that on Wednesday, March 27th, we have our 513 relief buses hitting a lot of areas, but this one is really a big one. It's going to be March 27th, Wednesday, the Development Disabilities Day. So everything about development disabilities will be there at the Hamilton DDS 5093 Kinsley Drive, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And so they're going to have everybody there. It's a one-stop. It's the first time we've done this. And I'm encouraging everyone to come there. If you have a child or if you yourself have disabilities, everything you need to know, everything you can sign up for will be there. And that's 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM on Wednesday, the 27th. So I wanted to highlight that. And it is March Madness. I'm a former basketball player. I love basketball. And I want to give a big shout out to Princeton girls. They were here last year. We're going to get a proclamation that my office is preparing for all of us. For them, the girls won again, three times in a row, state champions. And they also got some national recognition. So I wanted to give a big congratulations and shout out to them. Want to give a shout out to UC, they're an NIT, they won in overtime, UC men. And I want to give a shout out to my alma mater. Yesterday, I was super excited, Grambling State University, which is a HBCU located in Louisiana, founded in 1901, and the first time ever in the NCAA tournament, and we won in overtime. So I did a lot of screaming and shouting and there it is, they have the band and everything out. So wanted to highlight that. Thank you very much for highlighting it. And there was a time, and I know we give a lot of historical moments here, but there was a lot of time when HBCU, this is, they're located in Louisiana, it's also the home of Eddie Robinson, the legendary football-winning coach. But there was a time when if you went to an HBCU and you won your division, you could not go to the NCAA tournament without getting voted in. And I played, we won the SWAC championship. And in women's basketball, we had to get four votes from women coaches to go into the tournament. We got three. We couldn't get the fourth vote. And it was really devastating for us as young women who felt we had earned the right to play in the NCAA tournament. So I learned a lot going to Grambling, which is in the bellywop of the civil rights movement in the South. That's why I wanted to go there. But also understanding, even as a student, how we had to fight for rights. And what I loved about there, they had a lot of leadership that looked like me, president of the college, athletic directors, development of a stadium. That's why I kind of know about stadium just as a student. Looking, how do we get an Eddie Robinson stadium? How do we get an arena? And so it really taught me what you can be and what you should be. And it could be multiple people of excellence and leadership. But it also taught us how to fight for rights. And so we kept fighting and fighting. It didn't make it when I was there, but now this group, you win the SWAC championship, Division One, you get an opportunity to play in to the NCAA tournament. So they got in, I went there for history. History was made for Grambling that's in Louisiana, but history is made in Ohio. We made the history. And we beat Montana in overtime. And it was just a phenomenal thing. So they're on their way to Indianapolis and got to take on Purdue, so that might be, it's going to be interesting. They're the number one seed. But they got beat last year, so you never know. So Grambling, I just wanted to- So Grambling, I just wanted to say, there's a lot of alumni here in Hamilton County, and a lot of them went up, and I was just super, super-duper excited about that historical moment for my alma mater. So very, very excited. And our new president was my, I was Miss Grambling State University, and on my court was the freshman class president, and he just got awarded to be the president of Grambling State University. So I got to see him, and it was just amazing. It was just wonderful. So March Madness, we're in it, and it's gonna be a lot of great things. Who knows? Maybe we're the Cinderella team this year. I don't know. There's always a Cinderella that gets there. So we're still in to fight another day. So those are my remarks for today. Turning over to Vice President Drehouse.
Just have two things. The first is that I wanted to thank everybody that came out to vote on Tuesday. Also wanted to thank the individuals that put their names on the ballot and stepped up to serve in the community. That's what makes the democracy work, and so thank you to them. And then, secondly, I just wanted to highlight the HCARC One Ohio Meeting that was last Friday, and thank the members of HCARC for all their dedication to trying to save lives in this community and get people into long-term recovery. The effort would not work without the dedication of the multitude of people that are not only on the Steering Committee for HCARC, but the many, many partners throughout the community that provide the services to those individuals in recovery. So just one more thank you to all of them, and thanks to Alicia Nelson for coming down from Columbus to talk about the process by which people can apply for those One Ohio dollars once they hit the streets. These are the settlement dollars from the opioid settlement. So more to come on that, but did want to thank folks for their dedication to the work. Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. I participated in the White House briefing, as I always do every Thursday. Nothing, I'm not gonna say nothing, but nothing worth really reporting out. All of it, you've seen mostly on the news, but I know Director Fudge of HUD has resigned. That was maybe a couple of weeks ago, but I'm sure she'll be doing even greater things as she moves into another position and another focus. Also, attended the ARC, Hamilton County ARC meeting. I thought it was fantastic, the work that has been done. And I specifically want to thank Megan Guthrie and Lisa Webb for corralling all these professionals in one room, you know, quarterly, and sometimes more often than that. And so many people that are working so hard, and we are seeing the difference. So it was just a great event for me to attend. And then I just came from the Government Strategies Luncheon. Jeff Burden spoke about the future of the FC Cincinnati, what their vision is in the county, and then there was another representative from Cincinnati where it's because Phil Castellini was not able to attend, but I couldn't stay for that. But they have a very wide vision and look at the future for Hamilton County. It was quite interesting. And then I also met with Holly to talk about ARPA. I'm trying to think, Holly, I was trying to think of your last name because I was up here with Leslie trying to remember Megan's last name because she just got married. So Holly Christman for the ARPA reallocation and trying to get some, a better understanding of where we're gonna go with the money. And also today is National Down Syndrome Day, so just to let everybody know and celebrate because they bring great things to the world and the community. So that would be all that I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aludo.
Thank you, Commissioners. No comments today. We do have a couple of by leave items on your agenda. We're bringing these forward now as we do not believe we'll be meeting next Thursday on the 28th, so we wanted to get these before the Board today. All of these are things that have been discussed previously. By leaves one and two refer to the lines of credit, the financing vehicles for MSD that we had a staff meeting presentation on the other day. So by leave one is Resolution Number Three, providing for the authorization to enter into revolving credit agreement sewer system revenue obligation not to exceed 100 million. The fees for this particular credit instrument is 2.3 million over five years. Again, I would just say, for someone who may be watching at home who didn't happen to see the staff meeting presentation, that these are both financing vehicles for the Metropolitan Sewer District to obtain the necessary, the ability to access cash and to enter into contracts and loans in the most cost-effective way possible so that we don't need to raise rates to have that cash available, nor do we issue bonds at higher rates. These are the most cost-effective way to have access to this financing. So I don't know, the Board will recall, there are two particular instruments. By leave number one is the first of those two for a revolving credit agreement not to exceed 100 million, and again, the fees for this are 2.3 million over five years. I recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up, Vice President Drehouse.
No questions.
Commissioner Dumas.
No questions.
Okay, I make a motion to approve by leave one and two.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leave number two, in a similar vein, is Resolution Number Four. This is a similar type of vehicle, but this is a standing note purchase agreement with revenue notes not to exceed 250 million. The fees for this credit instrument is 1.6 million over five years. I recommend approval.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Oh, you just did one and two.
Yeah, we did one and two.
Oh, thank you.
I thought you explained two.
I did. I explained both of them. I just didn't read the full amount, but it's great. Okay.
All right.
Thank you. So moving to by leave three, which I don't think we've done, right?
No, we haven't done it.
This is Budget Adjustment Number 11, supplemental appropriation for the operation of the Hamilton County Justice Center Care Pods. We talked about this last week through a budget adjustment. This is an amount $510,000, and this relates to the Addiction Services Council operation of the care pods and the services associated with the care pods in the Justice Center, and this is financed through the Family Services and Treatment Levy. I recommend approval.
Okay, I'll open it up, Vice President Drehouse. Commissioner Dumas.
No questions.
Okay, I make a motion to approve by leave three.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leave number four is an appointment to a board. I didn't know.
Yeah. I can do that. Yep, by leave four is a resolution appointing one member to the Hamilton County Oral Health Commission, Luke Burrow. I'll open it up for questions or comments.
Thank Luke for his willingness to serve.
Commissioner Dumas.
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you for serving. I make a by leave, I mean, I make a motion to approve by leave four.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Thank you, Commissioners. That would be all the by leaves as you did by leave five a little bit earlier in the meeting.
Great. So we'll move to the calendar. And item number one through three, Mr. Engineer.
Good afternoon. First, I'd like to give my prayers out to Bridget Kelly as well.
Thank you.
Three items today. Item number one is a resolution authorizing a joint agreement with Great Parks of Hamilton County for the installation of rectangular rapid flashing beacons at various locations on Mount Hope Road. These are locations where the bike trails cross Mount Hope and will provide advance warning to vehicular traffic. 100% of the cost for the design, installation, operation, repair, and maintenance will be on the park board, so there is no cost to the general funds. Item number two, resolution authorizing a First Amendment to the Joint Agreement for Professional Engineering Services with Arcatus Engineering for the improvements on Much More Road in Columbia Township. This is an amendment in the amount of $15,303. This comes out of the Permissive Auto Funds, and this is for preparation of the right-of-way plans and deeds. Item number three is a resolution authorizing the county engineer to execute a project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for a federally-local let project, guardrail project for fiscal year 2024. We were successful in applying for a grant for 100% cost on some guardrail replacement in the amount of $300,000. This will allow me to sign that agreement so we can move forward with letting that project.
Thank you. We were just passed out an amendment. Thank you. Okay. Items number one through three. Any questions, comments, Vice President Drehouse? Commissioner Dumas.
No comments.
Okay, I make a motion to approve items one through three.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, Madam Clerk, you passed out this piece of paper. What is this referring to?
It was something I was giving for, I have to look up the item. You have the item for the interim.
Madam President, yeah, this is for item number 15. There was, there was an amendment necessary.
Okay, you want to get to it when we get to 15?
Yeah, so when I go through the consent agenda, I'll talk about that.
Okay, yeah, in the future. I'm in the middle of something. You pass me, I'm thinking it's for this particular item, but this is for 15, item of 15. Okay, got it. Okay, so now we'll, that's under the consent agenda. Got it. Okay, let's go to the consent agenda, Mr. Aludo.
Thank you, Commissioners. Consent agenda, I'll walk through fairly quickly here. Item number four is the Auditor's Financial Transactions for 2024, for February of 2024. Item number five is a resolution authorizing the time and location of the, of a change in the meeting time for the Board. This is for the April 16th meeting. Item number six is a resolution which transfers custody of the portions of the USS Cincinnati submarine that is currently owned by Hamilton County to the Submarine Cincinnati Memorial Association. Item number seven is a budget adjustment in the amount of 15.121 million. The primary items here relate to construction projects and resurfacing projects in the county engineer's office, Field Turtle Road construction at 5.4 million, the Hillside Road slide stabilization in Delhi also at 5.4 million, and then some additional engineer projects. Item number eight are bid awards and contracts authorized and executed by the Purchasing Department for February of 2024 at 2.123 million. Item number nine is a Resolution Number P056-24. This awards an invitation to bid on behalf of facilities for janitorial supplies with Acorn Distribution and Murphy Supply at 150,000. Item number 10 authorizes the award of ITB005-24 to Browning Chapman LLC. This is one of our concrete repair and waterproofing projects at Paycor for 264,200. Item number 11 is Resolution P058-24. This is the purchase of a Chevrolet Silverado for 45,555. Item number 12 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of Ford F-150 on behalf of the engineer's office for 45,995. Item 13 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2024 Honda CR-V Hybrid as a replacement in environmental services. Item number 14 is a resolution authorizing the invitation to bid, or an award of an invitation to bid on behalf of the county engineer for dump truck bodies at 334,509. Item number 15, which is what the replacement passed to you by the clerk, is Commissioners, I'll explain the item first. This is a resolution authorizing the execution of an amendment to an existing agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, and JTM, making certain findings with respect to an urban jobs and enterprise zone of the county. So this relates to an amendment to an existing enterprise zone that we have with JTM, and we have learned that JTM will actually be making a higher level of investment in property and equipment in the facility. The amended language you have in front of you, in the actual amendment, there was no paragraph that actually referenced the higher level of investment that the tax would apply, that the tax exemption would apply to, so we just wanted to make sure that that was called to your attention. So I think at this point, what we probably need, we can handle this now, we're at the end of the consent agenda, Commissioner.
Yeah, let's do it at the end of the consent.
Okay, we can do that. We'll just need to amend that item and then move on with it.
Will do. Thank you.
Then we have several Job and Family Services items, Commissioners. We have item number 16, which is a memorandum of understanding, identifying and detailing the different responsibilities and roles of the various community partners involved with child abuse and neglect in Hamilton County. Item number 17 is an agreement with the Hamilton County Prosecutor's Office for reimbursement of 4D child non-support cases, and that's at 224,091. Item number 18 is an agreement for foster care services with Ohio Mentor, Inc. for 201,564. Item number 19 is an agreement for foster care services with the Buckeye Ranch for 2.12 million. Item 20 is an agreement for group home services with Gateway to Success for 300,000. Item number 21 is an agreement for independent living services with Gateway to Success for 4 million. Item number 22 is an amendment to the agreement with Napier Trucking. This is for the purchase of truck driver training courses for our SNAP customers through Job and Family Services, and that is at 109,600. I'm sorry, is it 109 or is that 309? My, item number 22, 309,600. Item number 23 is a resolution for group home services, authorizing a renewal with Adeniz Haven of Rest at 128,000. Item 24 is an agreement for group home services for 183,000 with a Place of Hope LLC. Item number 25 is for prevention services with Talbert House, an agreement for prevention services with Talbert House at 199,948. And item 26 is an agreement for residential treatment services with NECO Center for 400,000. And Commissioners, we have several items for the Hamilton County Sheriff regarding the use of credit cards. Item number 27 is credit cards in the sheriff's office through Fifth Third Bank for 120,000, Fifth Third Mastercard Services for 120,000. Item number 28 is also authorizing the use of credit cards in the sheriff's office for the Patrol Division for 14,400. Item number 29 is authorizing credit cards for fuel services with Shell Fleet Plus at 120,000. Item number 30 is a resolution authorizing credit cards used by the sheriff's office in the administration for travel and training purposes through Huntington, 120,000. Item 31 is a report of no objection to one liquor permit application. Then we have item number 32, which is the Treasurer's Report for February of '24, and item number 33 requesting the authorization to travel at the county's expense, one employee in the coroner's office to Columbus, Ohio, two employees of the Treasurer's Office to Akron, Ohio. And that is your consent. If you'd like, Commissioner, you could do all of those but item 15. We could handle that separately.
Yep. Thank you. I would ask that we would amend item number 15. Is that what I'm doing? Michael, I'm sorry, help me. Am I doing that correctly? So does it 15A or?
Yeah, so you would amend item number 15.
15, yes. To include this language.
So you can move to amend number 15 to include that language?
Yes, I'll move to amend item 15 to include the language that's before us.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Okay. Now we'll open it up if there's any comments or questions on items seven through 32. Vice President Drehouse.
I did want to comment on item seven because it is such a large dollar item, and the engineer has a lot of projects, and here I know he's still in the room. I just wanted to note that because the engineer is very busy, as we all know, and Eric, I just want to compliment you on your team for getting all these projects out the door. I think infrastructure work is critically important to the county and the residents of Hamilton County. I hear about infrastructure quite a bit in my office, and I'm glad that these are moving forward, and thank you again for your work making that happen. The other item- Um, the other item I was looking for, it, it's the, related to the solid waste, uh, facility in Harrison Township. Is that on the agenda? Is that, that's a different item?
It is not. That's a different item. That's going through the Rural Zoning Commission. I don't know that that's actually going to need to come before the Board, but we will keep the Board posted if it does.
Well, in that case, I'm going to talk about it. Because I don't want it to go without noting that, um, our solid waste plan talked about an organics facility in this community. We, um, we're working with the City of Cincinnati and, um, others to think about, um, how we're treating organics yard, its yard waste and food stuff. Uh, well, there is an, uh, a company that wants to set up shop out in Harrison. And so it is going through the process, uh, wherein they have to get community approval for that pros- project, um, out in that area. And so if that were to pass, and the community were to say yes to that, uh, that it was, is a huge step, uh, for us trying to figure out how to keep waste out of the landfill. And so, um, if it's not coming in front of us, who do want to note it, I don't want to go without saying, uh, because it really does help in our efforts to reduce waste. So, just, I have it on my, um, desk. I don't, I just must have picked it up off my desk, you know, randomly. Uh, but anyway, here it is. So, uh, just wanted to note that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. I just had a question about, um, item 16. Jeff, I think under JFS, you may be able to answer. The MOU for child abuse and neglect, um, did our current one expire, or were there revisions to the one that we had?
Uh, Commissioner, it's a good question. I'll defer to, uh, Laura, uh, online from JFS to answer about any specific, um, uh, issue, or, uh, the details of that particular item. Laura, are you on?
Yes, I am, sir. Um, and good afternoon. Uh, this question, uh, yeah, this MOU is replacing the one previously. The previous one didn't expire, but it needed to be revised. So, um, we, I know that we have been receiving touchpoints from our, our partners up at Ohio Children and Youth to make sure that we get this on the agenda and approved. It took some time, because there's 47 different police jurisdictions that had to sign. And coordinating that was, uh, no small feat.
Well, thank you for your hard work. Um, just wondering if you could possibly, not now, um, highlight, you know, uh, your MOU, so I can see what the revisions were?
Um, I, absolutely. I can get with the person who, who's overseeing that process. And, and we, we'll get something to you, Jeff, through Michael, okay?